Good evening, everyone. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the date of February 23, 2022. It is about five minutes or so after seven. We are in Meeting Room One at Town Hall. As usual, we welcome our friends from Area 58 who are videocasting this meeting. First and foremost, we'd like to get our administrative matters out of the way before going to our cases. So the first matter that we need to address is the approval of meeting minutes of January 25, 2022. And as is my custom, I have reviewed those minutes with the help of our clerk, Ms. Pessella, and have distributed the drafts to all board members. Have they received those draft minutes?
Yes.
Have you all had a chance to review those draft minutes?
Correct.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, or modifications relative to those minutes that were forwarded to each of you?
No.
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 Do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes of January 25th, 2022, as written. Back end.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those minutes then are accepted as written. We have on our agenda this evening three cases, two of which are continued cases. I'm going to take the Winham PV1 LLC case out of order. That will appear as letter D on page two of your agenda. And I have, within the last 15 minutes, learned of a request from the attorney for the applicant. I'll read this into the record. It says, "On behalf of the above-referenced applicant," which is that Winham PV1 LLC company, "we sincerely apologize for our lack of appearance at the scheduled public hearing on January 11th. We understand how disrespectful it is to have wasted the board's time in this way without notice. This will not happen again. At this time, we are still conducting due diligence on this site and coordinating with our engineers in order to put together a plan and submission for the planning board, as per your guidance at our last meeting. To that end, we are respectfully requesting a continuance of our next public hearing date for a date in March 2022, or later if the board will allow it. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions or concerns." So this case will not be going forward, and we will not be hearing any further testimony tonight on this if it's the decision of the board to grant the requested continuance. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this?
In that, we require that they go to the planning board first before they come back to us. I think we have to grant it while they're still getting to the planning board.
We had, if all of you remember, many questions for the applicant when we opened this public hearing, and they did not have a lot of answers at that time. In their defense, I think this plan was still sort of formulating for them, and they had not done anything yet with the planning board or with the Conservation Commission, because I think there is a water issue on this property as well. So just to give you all a bit of a background for anyone who may be watching at home. So Ms. Clark suggests that we consider favorably this request for a continuance. Do you want to make that motion?
Do we need a date? I want to kick it out to April.
And when would you like to do it in April? Let's get our calendars, please.
I don't know that we have our meeting dates set.
We don't, but we can set an April date now if you would like.
Well, why not? When is April vacation? Who's got kids?
Third Monday, third Monday in April.
Did you want to say something?
I did, yes.
So let's consider doing it the week before, then. Does that sound?
Do you?
I'll recognize you in a minute. Let's just get over the date stuff first.
Well, if he has something to say relative to the date stuff, then get that out of the way.
Well, let's decide on a date, and then we can figure this out.
Alrighty.
Okay. So, the calendars people. How about the week before the school vacation week?
Which would be the 11th?
No, that's town meeting week. I'm not available.
The 4th?
The 12th would be the Tuesday.
The 12th would be the Tuesday. I would suggest the 26th, going right out to the end.
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
I mean, school vacation week takes up the third week. Town meeting week, that could go two nights.
Okay, yep. I may be away that week.
I can handle it.
I know you can. I know you can. Actually, we should handle it right now. Sounded anxious over there.
Believe me, I'm in no mood today.
She's got her prickly hat on.
I do, I do. I've had it on since 11:30 this morning. I don't, I don't see anything with those two middle weeks that are feasible.
I agree. If we're going to be a town meeting two nights...
Nobody's going to want to see us after that.
So what date are we suggesting?
I'm suggesting Tuesday the 26th, or if they're not, if they don't have any issues...
But Steve, you said that might be a problem for you, then.
If it is, then Ms. Clark is...
Well, I mean, I'm willing to go into May on this, too. I mean, if they have to get in front of the planning board. The planning board right now is going to be tied up with public hearings for zoning issues, and they also have a full schedule for their next two meetings.
Well, then I would suggest, I mean, we'd want to make sure that everybody, at least at the outset, could be here, because if you can't, and then all of a sudden someone else can be, then we're down even more numbers.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd feel, so the reason why you're saying, so that they will have enough time to get everything done that they need to get done?
They need to, if...
Okay.
Since we were asked them to go to Concom and Planning Board first and get some kind of determination, then there's no sense in coming back here until they've done that.
Okay.
Or at least started the process.
I think Ms. Clark is suggesting they need plenty of time.
Yep.
And he said later, so if this is by request of the applicant, then we're not bound. I mean, the ticking time clock stops.
Well, then how about May 3rd, then?
I'm good.
I might also add, now that this comes to mind, that we have a case in the queue that we're going to have to schedule.
That'd probably be March or April. That has to be in March or April.
Right. So we can discuss a date for that one before we adjourn tonight.
Right, but this one...
For this one?
May what?
May 3rd, Tuesday, May 3rd.
So Ms. Clark has made that motion, and after discussion, there's a consensus that May 3rd would be a good date for everybody?
Yep.
Is that true? Do I hear a second on Ms. Clark's motion?
Second.
All right. Now, before we take a vote, did you want to be heard with regard to anything?
Quick, I'm sorry. So my name is David Burson. Good evening. I'm the attorney who actually prepared that letter. Just a few things, if you don't mind. So, one, I just wanted to state that I believe I had written that letter, but I believe my client actually did send a request or extension prior to that meeting. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Now, the last thing I want to say is that I appreciate the lengthy extension. The reason I'm here tonight is I didn't want to leave such a lengthy extension request to just a paper request. I thought it would be more sense to come here in person, just in the event that you had specific questions for us. I do have some more details if you wanted them, but it sounds like you guys are comfortable with just granting them.
Yeah, I mean, we are quite flexible with regard to requests for continuances barring unusual circumstances. So we appreciate your letter. We appreciate your comment that it's going to take you folks a while. We don't attach any prejudice to your application simply because you need to get more ducks in a row. I mean, this is a, it's a complicated project, right? So you've got at least two other boards that you're going to have to get some sort of idea about what their mindset is on these things. And both the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board are known to give applicants advisory opinions. This one does not.
Right.
Because we're an appellate board. So we're sort of in our ivory tower, and whatever you have to do, do it, and then when you're ready, you come back to us.
And just to clarify, there is no issue, like, if we do, I mean, you had spoken initially about meeting with the planning board informally to get their take on things.
Right.
Is it a problem for us to then start this process back up again once we're kind of through the planning board?
I didn't hear you said a problem.
Would it be a problem to then start, like, contemporaneous hearings once things are kind of underway with the planning boards? Is that something this board will also...
You mean contemporaneous with ours?
Correct. Not at the same time. I just mean, like, the boards running in tandem with their respective hearings.
Well, you know, there's nothing that prevents you from scheduling that way, but, and here I'm just saying that there's no advisory opinion of this board office, but you may want to...
I won't take this advice.
You may want to try to knock one pin over at a time.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
And I guess my question would be, do you believe that May 3rd gives you enough time to do what you would like to get done?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
This case is continued at the request of the applicant to May 3rd.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
So we have a ZBA meeting on May 3rd.
That's true.
Hold on. Bump my RDA meetings, because I usually the first...
Patty, is this good for you, May 3rd? Please, you know, sometimes I don't keep all the schedules in my head because it's too much. So just interrupt me if I hit on a date that doesn't work for you.
It's usually the second and the fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, but sometimes I don't...
You can't do.
I don't remember. Okay. So this leaves us with two cases, and I'm going to go to the continued case of 82-1-1R, the petitioner being Keith, or petitioner is being Keith and Carol House. I see Ms. House in the back. Come right up, Ms. House, and sit in the chair there if you would. She's requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 2245(c), 5221, and 5300 and Sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 223 Meadow Street in Carver.
Thank you. And will there be four people sitting on this?
Assessors map 82 lot 1-1-R, so as to construct a 30 by 60 or 1,800 square feet detached garage with a maximum allowed being 700 square feet in a residential agricultural district. Now, Ms. Clark, do you want to be heard on whether you feel as if you should be sitting on this case?
Since they took testimony, and we don't have it in place, that if you watch the tape, that allows you to sit on the decision, I will not be.
Okay, so Ms. Clark will not be sitting on this case, which...
Was Frank here, though?
I think he was.
Yeah.
Mr. Casey is not present, so as you can count, there are one, two, three, four of us. And that's significant for legal reasons. Let me explain to you what they are, because this might affect how you want to proceed, if at all, tonight.
Okay.
If there is a full board of five voting, your petition can be accepted and approved for the relief that you're asking on a vote of four to one. But as a board of four, although we still have a quorum, the vote would have to be unanimous to grant you the relief that you're requesting.
Okay.
So you have a tactical or strategic decision to make about whether you want to proceed tonight or whether you want to wait until our next meeting, which will probably be within the next 30 days.
Okay.
Now, we've been out to the site, as you know. We've heard from you a couple of times.
Yeah.
You've just given us another plan.
Yeah.
Which we have not seen before now. So it's up to you whether you want to take a shot and try to get this, get this board to a vote tonight. No guarantees. And I know that some of us expressed some concern about the size of this project.
Yes.
So I leave it to you to advise us now as to whether you want to wait for our next meeting and a full board, or whether you want to proceed this evening.
Um...
Take your time. Think about this.
Do you want to go out and check with someone or call someone?
No, no. I did speak with the building inspector.
Don't want to get into the merits.
Okay. I mean, I don't think there's anything more I can add to it, but at the same time, it doesn't hurt for me to wait.
Yeah. The reason that someone might want to wait is because they're hedging their bets a little bit on the vote.
Yeah.
You know, unanimity versus four to one.
Yeah.
So if we have a full board, and usually we do, I don't know what's happened to Mr. Casey tonight. I hope he's okay. But usually people can come in and depend upon this board to have a full board, a full voting board of five present.
Okay.
Okay? Tonight, we're down two, one of whom is here but not really.
Okay.
And the one that would be sitting in that empty chair.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's not like we're going to worry about doing anything about this real quickly, so I have time. I was happy...
It's going to snow on Friday.
I was happy with your Wednesday meeting, because I work every other Tuesday, so that may be a problem.
So are you requesting this board to grant you a continuance?
Sure, yes.
Does anyone want to discuss that request for continuance? Does anyone want to make a motion?
So moved. We continue this case to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Let's talk about what date we can agree to have you come back.
Okay.
Now, we have one case in the queue, as I just mentioned, that needs to be scheduled. So I think what I would propose is to have you come back on the same date that that other case would be going forward, not the one that was just called before you. That's different.
Yeah.
They needed to be booked further out.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm thinking sometime in March.
Okay.
Is that okay?
You said you work every other Tuesday?
Yes.
Which Tuesdays?
I was off...
Just every other?
Every other.
Automatically, every other?
Yeah, I was off this Tuesday, so I'm on.
So which Tuesdays in March would work for you?
I would have to determine the every other from this point, which I don't know.
All right. Ms. Mello, can you assist us with the scheduling?
Here, just come look at, just go look at my calendar.
While they're looking, what dates do you have for Tuesdays?
All right, so today's...
The 1st, the 8th, the 15th, the 22nd.
On 29th.
Do all of those dates work for you, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Can you vote me if I can vote? We're not...
All of them?
The first, now, first, I can't do next week anyway.
Mr. Chairman, she's available the 8th and the 22nd.
There we go.
On Tuesdays.
Do the, does either one of those dates pose a problem for anybody, the 8th or the 22nd?
The 22nd, I would need to call it. The 8th, I am available.
Is the 8th the second Tuesday?
Yep.
Is it the second Tuesday already on the 8th?
Yeah.
Yeah, the 1st is the first Tuesday. Is that one of your busy days?
Yeah.
Do you want to listen to it on the...
Yeah, I can do that, fine.
I will miss you.
Yeah, sure you will. Yeah, that's fine.
I'm getting used to seeing you over here.
I know.
Our, has the other, I mean, we're at the 23rd now. Has the other case been noticed? The public notice?
No, they're waiting to get a date from me.
Oh, then it has to be the 22nd. They don't have time for a public notice.
That's a good thought, too. So who can't do it on the 22nd?
It's like my best thing.
I can do it, but I'd be remote.
I don't like it when you're remote. I like it when you're here.
I will definitely be here remotely.
Thank you for that, Ms. Clark. That's, we just avoided having to make a change.
Well, I'm on top of that now.
Yes, I know you're... So March 22 with Ms. Mello remote. Now, how are you going to call in? How does that, how's that done? Do we see your face up there?
Whatever, if you want to set up the Zoom, we can do it that way, or however it works best for the board.
Well, what I would like for you to do is to coordinate with Ms. Clark on this, because she's used to Zooming.
Yes.
And although I am, too, she's more used to it in this setting than I would be.
I think the Zoom is better than the phone. Yeah, but I mean, I can have you up on my iPad, and it's just a matter of making sure the Wi-Fi is here.
Yep.
And I believe, I'm not sitting on the case, but I think we have all the plans, and you've all done the site walk, so it should be pretty, it's not like you have to see anything there. No, so, okay. I'll take care of that.
Before we vote on the continuance, I just wanted to reiterate that when we went out there to take a look at this, and this does not require any comment from you, but I want to put this on the record, that the actual square footage based upon the plan that was then before us was 2,100 square feet, because it had that second floor.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Remember, you and I had that conversation? So we, in the meantime, will take a look at this plan, which you just passed out, and we'll take this up again on March 22.
Okay.
Are you sure that we have to push it out that far? It doesn't have to be re-advertized.
Not hers. You said the new case.
The new case, yes.
The new case does.
Yes.
Yeah. Because today would have been the last day to get it in on Friday.
Yep.
It's got to be too successful.
Ms. Clark is expert on these notice dates.
Yeah.
So I want to thank you for coming tonight, and on behalf of the board, I apologize for us being down a couple.
Okay.
But these things happen, especially in the winter. It's nice to see your face again.
Okay.
Stay healthy.
You know, I try, I came two weeks ago thinking that it was two Wednesdays ago.
And did you make a presentation to an empty room? Did you practice?
I tried to figure out, okay, when was it? Because I didn't think much of it, because it wasn't a Tuesday. I said, okay, it's Wednesday. I can do every Wednesday.
There must have been a meeting going on somewhere that you should have jumped in.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting. I actually could, I went to the town website and didn't see you there, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have one more matter before us tonight. This is public hearing case number 1-20-0R. The petitioner is Richard Antoniotti. What did I do with that?
Right.
Requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 5221 and 5300 and Sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located in 92-B South Main Street in Carver. That's assessors map 1 lot 20-0-R, to modify and extend two pre-existing non-conforming structures on a lot, and to make each existing building a two-bedroom structure in a residential agricultural district. Now, I'm going to have to look on with somebody, and I see that Ms. Clark is fully extended, so we're in her permission. Quickly tonight.
I am.
It's our practice to review all the paperwork in advance of our public hearings, so I do distribute all this stuff in advance, and I can assure you that we all look at it in advance. This may be atypical, but we're pretty diligent about our preparations. I don't think we've seen this plan before, but...
Did we see, was this the smaller one you gave us? I think the smaller one we gave us only had three on it.
No, that's the one I submitted with the lady downstairs before.
Was it...
She did give us a small one.
You got a smaller one?
Yeah, we did, okay.
That's why that looks different.
I've seen that.
Okay.
All right, so it's the full size of the small one?
It's a full size, yeah.
Okay. So Ms. Clark, I'm going to...
Easier to read, you tell you the...
At the outset here, and before turning the floor over to the applicant and counsel, ask if you have anything that you want to say at the outset.
Um, sure. Have you been to Concom?
No.
Are you going to Concom?
We weren't aware that we needed to.
No, you have to.
Okay.
Um, if I'm reading, and you can explain this to me, if I'm reading the plan correctly. If you're changing the existing footprint, not using a part of the footprint, but changing the existing footprint, which I think from one to four, that's what I'm seeing, a whole new 30, hang on, 30 by 40 new construction, then that has to be approved by Concom. I mean, you're 13 feet from the pond. We actually can't authorize any of this.
Okay.
And the other thing I see immediately that jumps out at me is that you're not really reconstructing, if I'm looking at the first page of the first lot, you're not really reconstructing a second cottage. The cottage is there, it's there in the sconce. You have a new proposed, completely proposed home in the back. You can't have two single-family dwellings on a lot. I mean, I can't, I have an acre, so do you want to explain that?
It was my understanding of the bylaws that that is an allowable situation, especially if you have a pre-existing non-conforming where people were living in the small shed and the larger one.
But you have to be reconstructing the smaller one. And what I'm seeing is that you're tearing down the smaller one and building a new house. Yeah. And that's going to have to go through Concom, too. I don't have the actual distances, but you, I think the second home...
The first one's about 13 feet from the water?
Yeah.
And what's this, how far away is it?
The second one, I'm guessing, is inside the buffer zone at some point.
So inside of 60 feet?
Six, I had 65 and 100, so it's in, well, there's one for 65, and then there's one for 100. But I don't know which one it sits. This total lot line is 197, so I don't know where the front part of this new build sits.
But you think it may be within...
Well, it is within 100, because it's 62 and 30.
Oh, you're right.
Which would be 92.
Very well.
I can read these plans.
No, that you can add. Right, but that, this is totally something that has to go to Concom first, because even though we might grant a special permit for it, that might be completely in violation of what I believe is Section 9.2.1.3. Oh, it was Concom.
The other one was within 100 feet, you said?
I think it's, would you say it's outside, just outside by five feet?
Yeah.
Was it 95, then?
Was it 92 going to the back?
92 feet from the water.
Right.
Right.
Has the septic plant been repaired?
It's not right. Excuse me just a second.
Yes.
Chair, what?
It's been engineered.
Sorry. What's 197 minus 92? 102. 105?
105.
Oh, 19, I was just doing 97 and 92. Oh, 19, I was just doing 97 and 92.
105. It's five feet from the 100-foot buffer zone.
The second house, but I don't know about having a second single-family home.
So it's.
I mean, it.
Too close by five feet, is that what you're saying?
No, it's just outside.
It's five feet outside.
So it's okay?
The second one does.
The second one's okay. First one is too close.
Correct.
Based on, okay. So we're talking about one, not two houses being too close.
And the building commissioner did not say you needed to go to Concom when you took it to him for, this denial?
No, he did not.
How long ago was that?
When was that?
Um, when did we flip back? In February? January?
This is February, so.
December. Yeah, December 1, Psalm.
Do you have, do you have the denial letter?
No, he did not issue a denial letter. He simply said, you need to come here.
He signed a piece of paper that was in the package, I believe, that was his, he signed it.
Oh, that may be.
Do we have anything that's called the chase signature? Well, it's, and of course, I'll defer to the chair, but it's, it's my feeling that we continue this case until they go into Concom. I mean, we did something similar with 129 Seventh Street. Um, oh, thank you, that's what I was trying to. I, does the rest of the board want to turn?
Well, are we going to take testimony on this, or are we just looking at the merits right now? As to whether or not.
I'll defer to the chair.
We're not going to take testimony, and we're not going to go to the merits.
Okay.
What we're going to do is abide by proper procedure. And as Ms. Clark says, and she has been around longer than I.
Not that much older.
She understands better than I that in cases like this, it's important to put a horse before the cart and not vice versa. So we make no judgment as a board about the merits of this application. Don't interpret anything that we have been talking about up here tonight as an indication as to how we would vote, whether we're pro or per con. I don't want you walking out of here thinking either of those.
No, completely understand.
I know you do. We do the same thing. So what I'd like to do is to have this case redirected to the Conservation Commission because even if we were to give you everything that you wanted, if Concom says no.
Okay.
This doesn't happen. So you start with them, and then if you get a positive audience, then you come back before us.
Okay. Do we need to go through planning at all?
I, I'm not sure of site plan review at this point because the, if Concom will allow you to reconstruct the, the home by the pond.
Mm-hmm.
Then I think it's a special permit for us to decide whether you can have a second home on a, a state of lot.
Okay.
So offhand, I would say no, but.
Okay.
I'm sure I'll be corrected, but.
Now, be aware, and I'm not going to speak for the Conservation Commission. We have no jurisdiction over their issues, nor do they have jurisdiction over ours. But they are concerned with water issues and structures built close to water.
Okay.
So you will need to address that in a way that you feel puts your clients' best foot forward. And that may end it right there for you, or you may find a positive audience, and then you'll end up before our happy faces again. So we are right now a board of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, so we're good. The next time you have to come before us, we don't have that other issue that we were talking about before. Now, do you have any questions?
No, and, and I was going to say, we, I know you handed me this email last minute, and so we have.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. For the record, I received an email this afternoon, which I then quickly turned around and distributed to all board members, and as soon as I saw you here tonight, let the record show that I gave it to you as well.
Yep.
This is an email. Thank you, Ms. Mello. Here we go. And I'll just summarize this because it's lengthy and detailed, from Scott Hanula. Again, received by me this afternoon. The company of his fam, of his family, which is Oiva Hanula and Sons, is a direct abbot to the property. And he couldn't be here tonight. He says that he and his company are always in favor of landowners being able to do with their property what they would like, as long as it goes through the appropriate channels and doesn't impact neighbors in a negative way. So he raises seven questions. First, he says that he has been told that the access to the home is over a deeded right-of-way that belongs to his company, or his family's company, and if that's true, he would like to see the recorded or deeded access filing. Second, he says that the current plan shows two fairly large dwellings on 14,872 square feet, and he asks if this is being done currently in town, or is this a new precedent-setting request? Third, he says each, is each dwelling going to have their own separate well and septic systems? And if so, are we going to be able to see the locations on a plan prior to a resolution? Fourth, is there going to be a deemed restriction that these homes cannot be subdivided in the future? I'm not quite sure what he's getting at there. But number five, will the current utility poles be able to supply adequate services to both dwellings when in full use? Six, what will be the final grading elevations proposed? And seven, according to the plan, a new 30 by 30-foot home will be where the current driveway and parking area is. And he questions whether there's adequate space on the lot to allow for vehicles and not have overflow onto his family's property. He asks that these concerns be addressed at the meeting and that I be forwarded this email as soon as it was sent to the planning department downstairs this afternoon. He also suggests that if any ZBA members would like to reach out to him directly, that we should feel free to do that. I want to, I want to say quite firmly that we don't reach out, and we don't have off-the-record conversations with applicants. So you need not worry that we'll, we'll go in that direction on you.
Thank you.
No private conversations, that's not what we do. But these are questions that, depending upon whether you come back here or not, are questions that I'm sure will be raised again, and some board members may like to have answers to these questions as well. So I'm glad that we're seeing you tonight, so at least I could give you that, and you could start to get your heads wrapped around how you would like to respond to these questions.
No, absolutely, and that, and what I was going to say was that we, we were amenable to continuing so that we didn't have, have the issue of him raising questions afterwards and, or not being able to address them when he was able to attend, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one point?
Of course you can.
Um, as to your information that you, or what you said, that you didn't know you had to go to Concom, I just want to point out that this plan is dated 12/22/21. I assume you had it shortly thereafter. And under general notes, number two, it says owner will be required to file a notice of intent with the Carver Conservation Commission, as well as with the Department of Environmental Protection. No work can be performed until an order of condition is issued by the commission. Right? It is right there.
Just one more here.
Right there.
What you playing with that?
Thank you, just wanted to point that out.
Ms. Clark makes good points.
So do you want to kick this out to our May meeting, an April meeting? What do you want to say? We have a meeting scheduled for May 3?
Yeah, depending on, on what conservation's schedule is like.
Uh, I can tell you when they're meeting in March because I know. They're meeting the 9th and the 23rd of March.
Or you may want to go to April. If you've got other things you need to research.
I don't think we're meeting in April though, Steve. We pushed out of April into the first week of May.
Right.
Well, we haven't scheduled anything. Our, our meetings in March could be continued to April.
Right, and we have that case in the queue.
Yes, right.
Which will be the end of March.
Okay.
Right, so.
You can always go right into the, speak to the conservation agent. She'll be able to direct you much quicker than waiting for a, a, um, to see Brooke.
Yeah, how about I, I speak to her, see what we can do, and then get back to, to you as to what, you know, if we're looking until the end of March or later out. If that works.
Rather not. Keep in mind, and you'll appreciate this, I'm trying to manage five or six, seven different schedules here. So I'd like to get a date from you, and then if that date needs to change, you can always send an email.
Okay.
So at least let's get one for the record now.
Your choices are March 22 or May 3. There could be a, a meeting in April. If anyone happens on March 22.
How about we go for the March 22, and if conservation's schedule doesn't allow, then, then we'll continue this to May.
Okay.
Okay, that's basically just one month out, so.
And that only gives you one meeting in March to get to conservation because their next meeting, they have one meeting on the 9th and one meeting on the 23rd.
Right, so you're going to have to hurry to dot all your i's and cross your t's.
So get, get to Brooke tomorrow because the weather's really going to be bad on Friday.
Okay, it appears as if you're going to have to make some filings.
Yeah.
We will be happy to receive you again on March 22 or some other date if you're not quite ready.
All right.
Just let us know, and please don't let me know that day or the day before.
Yeah.
Okay? That's one of our bugaboo's, is when we get stuff dumped on us the same day that we're going to have a meeting that night.
I, I appreciate the, the sentiment and have been the recipient of continuance after continuance for a different town, a different matter, and it's always the last minute that the applicant is coming and saying, can we push it to the next one, to the next one? You know, as someone, as a concerned party, you're, it's frustrating when you sit there for an hour and a half before they finally go, oh, we're going to continue that one.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Antoniotti, do you have any questions before you leave?
Not at all.
You sure?
Thank you.
And thank you for your patience, both of you.
Yep.
Good luck. I can't hear you with that mask.
Do we need to vote?
Yeah, do we need to vote on this? Do you want to take a vote on the, let's take a vote on the continuance. Continue this to March 22. Who wants to make that?
So vote.
Second, on favor?
All right.
Okay.
Okay, now you can go.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Don't shovel any snow. We have one other matter that we now need to go back to and that I've been referencing all evening, and that is scheduling a date for our case in the queue because that one will need to be published. That case is a significant case that involves, again, issues surrounding sand and gravel removal. So we have some experience in this area, as you all know. This is a different petitioner, okay? This is a different petitioner, but a lot of the issues that we had to deal with before will probably come up in that one. Again, I make no, I'm not intending to indicate any prejudgment on this one because each case is its own case. I just mention this because, for scheduling purposes, we may need a little bit more time on this one.
It has to open on March 22.
Because?
Because we set the date for the continuance to March 22 in order to cover the publishing dates of the one you said that was in the, in the pipeline.
So March 22.
So March 22, they, go ahead and publish it. They can come in if it's a case that is open, that is continuing, then we know we'll have a meeting in April. Or May 3.
Or May 3.
Spring Street and Route 44, Route 44. So let's recapitulate these dates for a minute because we've had a lot of discussion on different dates. We have a March 22 date for that case that was just before us, the Antoniotti case, March 22. And then we have May 3 for the Barn case, the, what is that, the Meadow Street case?
Yep.
No, the, that was for Wenham.
That, oh, that's right.
The Barn case, Barn case is coming back on the 22nd.
Which means we'll have two continued and one new.
Yes.
Right. And then we don't have anything scheduled for April because.
We don't have anything scheduled for April.
And we have Wenham, the Silver Barn on.
May 3?
May 3.
Yeah. And two cases on March 22.
It'll be three with the new one. So two continuances and a new one.
That's the Barn case, that's the Antoniotti case, and the new case.
The new case.
So, yes. Everybody clear on the dates?
I am clear.
Does, anybody have anything that they feel needs to be addressed at this point in No. I'm sure there's nothing else on the agenda here.
Something else, very little.
And I've read into the record all the correspondence received in connection with the cases tonight, so I don't think there's any other correspondence, correct? So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barrington, you're almost coming out of your chair wanting to make that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Carver, we stand adjourned.